So, oh, no, no worries. And so now we'll move on to our item 7.5. Consideration of presentation and discussion by Watershed Protection District for the request to allocate $500,000 internal matching funds over a period of six years to support 1.9 million in approved and partially awarded Blue Ribbon Committee Stormwater Project grant funds. And I'm, and yeah, so it's, this will be presented by either Angela Dowd, or Angela DePalma Dow and Marina Del Gianni.
There we go.
All right, she's on. There we go. And so we'll give the floor to you.
Hello. Thank you so much for having me this afternoon, the board. Marina was going to join me. I think she's still trying to get into the Zoom room, but I can, I can lead this topic. Again, thank you so much for bringing this before the board today. I did just want to clarify that we had provided you a package of information ahead of time, although I wanted to point out a correction for one of those items. So you guys should have gotten a copy of the original. We wrote this as an original cannabis grant request for internal cannabis grant funds. And so I provided the original proposal for that grant. I also provided a copy of the presentation. I have about a 10-minute presentation for you today to go along with this item. And I also presented, or provided you with the memo. However, the memo that's on Clear Lake is the correct one. The distinction between the two is that in the one I provided you in the package, it indicated these were cannabis internal tax funds that we're requesting the match. However, we have changed it to there be more broad in scope to be the internal match fund, so not specific to cannabis tax funds for this. And I know that some of admin is here to help with this discussion if needed.
All right.
All right. And I can go ahead and, if it's all right, I can share my screen and start the presentation for this item?
Yes, please.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So my name's Angela DePalma Dow. I'm Invasive Species Program coordinator for Water Resources and for the Watershed Protection District, but I also manage our stormwater programming and surface water quality monitoring programming. And I also serve on the technical subcommittee of the Blue Ribbon Committee for the rehabilitation of Clear Lake. And so today, we're going to talk a little bit about the Lake County Stormwater Program and infrastructure improvement grants that we've received or approved from the Blue Ribbon Committee and the potential for a match for this program. So the purpose of this presentation today is to demonstrate a need to match approved Blue Ribbon Committee funds. So in September 20, or it's September 23rd, this is actually 2021, September 22 hasn't happened yet, but the Blue Ribbon Committee approved 1.9 million in grant funds to improve stormwater programming and projects within the county of Lake. And currently, 706,000 of that, of those funds were approved immediately since it was an implementation project. And those funds are under contract, and you guys actually approved the approval of receiving those funds on the consent item today. So thank you very much for doing that. And we are requesting internal county funds to match this 1.9 million for 500,000 is the match we're asking for. And so the purpose of today is to address any questions in a discussion and also provide some background and some need, demonstrate the need for this, this match and for this program. And so we are requesting $500,000 match internal county funds for the period of this coming fiscal year, 2022, 2023 to 2027 to 2028. And we would really like to gain the support of the board and commitment to this match starting in the next fiscal year of 2022, 2023 at a rolling basis. So 100,000 per year, starting next year, next fiscal year, until five years after that. And we do see these funds as being rollover. So if any given year, we don't spend 100,000, if we have like a $20,000 left, that'll roll over into the next year. So we're really committed to using these funds, but we're not gaining any, any access of unused funds. And we are kindly asking for 50,000 in advance in order to start purchasing equipment and using these grants. We need money to start that, and I'm sure you're aware that state programs and grant funds, even through the Blue Ribbon Committee, are right reimbursement basis. And so sometimes for us to start projects, we have to have money to start that process. So the summary of need for this, this is the overall project. So what we went to the Blue Ribbon Committee for to ask for these funds in the first place is that it's a desperately needed project, stormwater management, stormwater improvements. And this is because there is a direct connection between stormwater runoff and lake water quality. And this is really important because Lake, Clear Lake serves as a drinking water source, and we currently pay some of the highest rates in the states for this drinking water source. And previous and current research, even here locally, that's been completed over the last 30 years, and some current research that's going on right now in the lake, always results in the same recommendation that improved stormwater infrastructure is important to reduce nutrients such as phosphorus and nitrogen, which are the P and there. We have a history of applying for external stormwater resource, or stormwater funds. When we look at our overall grant history, we're really good about getting grants in this department. So since 2018, we've been awarded 3.4 million in grants for non-stormwater projects. So we know how to write grants. We know how to get grants. We know how to execute them. We applied for 2.8 million in specifically stormwater or nutrient reduction grants, and we have not gotten those. So for some reason, we're just not as competitive with stormwater grants when we are in everything else that we apply for. And this is just important because now that we have this grant from Blue Ribbon Committee for 1.9 million dollars, we really want to make sure that we can maximize those funds and make this program really robust so it can actually serve the intent to improve water quality. So this match is really needed to ensure that we can have that continuity and the execution of this program and completeness. So making sure that we are able to carry out all the tasks or any related tasks that are needed to make sure that we're completing all of those things that we indicated in the grant or other things that pop up that we might need to do. We also want to make sure that we can transition to the sustainability and the legacy of this project. So a lot of time, projects work in patchwork. You get a grant, you complete the project, and then it's done. Stormwater is not one type, a type of program like that. We're always going to have rain that falls in the landscape. We're always going to have stormwater infrastructure like pulverts, drains. We're always going to have these things on the land that we're going to need to manage and improve. And so we need to make sure that we incorporate that continuity and that legacy in these, in these programs. Now, there's some built-in oversight with this program, the Lake County Clean Water Program Management Council. We've been meeting pretty regularly. This is the members of the management council. This is like the Stormwater Advisory Group. This is what it used to be called, and now it's called the Clean Water Program Management Council. We have representatives here from the City of Lakeport, City of Clear Lake, Watershed Protection District, as well as Water Resources in the county of Lake. And everybody in this management council had, wrote a letter of support to the Blue Ribbon Committee for this project with the intent to that there might be other things that we need, and so we would be looking for, asking for this match. And these are some of the tasks. I'm going to go through each of these here in a second, but you can see how those funds, these are what was approved from the Blue Ribbon Committee, the 1.9 million dollars. This is how that was broken up. And you could see task, oh, they're all numbered one. Okay. Well, it's the fourth one down. Sorry about that. The trash plan implementation. This was the implementation project that was awarded funds right away from the Blue Ribbon Committee and is currently in contract. And so we should be starting that within a couple of months. And all the other tasks will be approved next year in the governor's budget, and that's when those projects will start. And so you can see that this total project over the next five-year period will be somewhere around the range of 2.4 million dollars. So the first one, project administration, pretty self-explanatory. Again, this will be provided oversight by the Watershed Protection District with the Clean Water Program. And if you go onto our website, under the Clean Water Program Management Council documents, we have a long history of meeting regularly and accomplishing a lot of tasks within the Clean Water Program. And so we do have a history of being able to accomplish these things, and this would be a great board for oversight for this. The task, second task is infrastructure assessment and improvement. And this will be mostly coordinated by the Watershed Protection District with also a consultant that'll go out, actually out into the county, look at all the infrastructure that we have, and make an assessment about which ones should be improved, which ones can be improved, that'll provide the maximum amount of water quality improvement. So where can we put some green infrastructure or some retention basins so that we can maximize the way that we hold nutrients on the land and not let them flow to the lake? And so this will include on-the-ground assessments, structural controls, stormwater infrastructure, and prioritize areas that can be improved, and then do some designs. So when implementation funds come up, we're ready to go. We can submit those boots-on-the-ground projects. And this here on the right is a photo. I'm not picking on Lakeport, but this is the type of stormwater infrastructure that we see every day that's out there that really is conveying that stormwater directly to the lake. And so here's an example of one. This is on the Lassure side of the lake. This is Caltrans 20. You're looking over at the lake. And this is very common to have these big drains that basically just funnel everything, all the runoff, stormwater, straight out of pipe, right into the lake. There's really nothing there to slow it, stop it, or settle that water and allow those sediments or nutrients to filter out. So what we want to do is kind of replace this infrastructure we have that's outdated here on the left with infrastructure on the right. But which ones do we choose? What are the sizings? What are the materials that are best? That's what this task will do, is figure that out for us. And here's some examples of another location on the left, a cement channel that's basically made to convey that water as fast as possible out of that pipe and into the lake and away from the homes, away from the road. And what we want to do is see if we can replace it with infrastructure like here on the right. There's two examples that are lakeside, near-water bodies that have some smart stormwater design in place. Task three is to improve stormwater management policy, program review and improvement. So everything comes down to our ordinances, our policies we have in place. And again, we'll get a consultant to help us go through everything that we have existing right now and indicate ways that we can improve it and actually write that language for us and work with us to improve all of those administrative policy things that we need so we can make this program better for management. And this will work across the departments that have some stake in stormwater. That includes public works, planning, water resources, environmental health, as well as jurisdictions at Clear Lake and, City of Clear Lake and Lakeport. This task also updates our stormwater management plan. The last time this plan was updated was 2003, and it hasn't been touched in 2008, so it's a little expired. And then a lot of the stuff we've been working on recently, it'll, the improvements will incorporate all those things we've done, like the program effectiveness assessment improvement plan, which we got completed last year. Task four, this one's in progress. This is really exciting. So this is for trash plan implementation, and this will work across a variety of departments like Water Resources, Public Services, Code Enforcement, to provide resources and means to do solid waste removal enforcement. We want to start adopt the drain, expand the adopt the street program, and maybe have a creeks and streets cleanup event program that's more regular in more places. And we have more of these events like we have pictured here on the right where we can get some of those trash out of these waterways and into the landfill where they belong. This will also, this task will also improve our illicit discharge spill response. So whenever there's a spill in a creek or a waterway, we have more processes set up to be able to respond appropriately and remove impact of any of those contaminants or pollution. Last task is our outreach education. This is really important, right? Because we want to make sure that we're communicating and educating the public about stormwater and why they should care about stormwater so we can stop pollution and runoff from the source before it's even created. And so a lot of this will be creating educational content, materials, and curricula that'll be out in the schools and available, and then also outreach content distribution in all sorts of formats so people can learn about stormwater and the importance of it and its role with Clear Lake and other aquatic resources. And this is, I think, one of the most important parts because it's creating that legacy of stormwater and water quality awareness and that appreciation and how important it is for Clear Lake and Greater Lake County. So that was a lot. Thank you so much. Here's a summary of the asks today is we're asking for commitment to an internal county match to support this grant project. Again, 500,000 between 2022 to 2028 on a rollover basis so we maximize those funds. And we're not just letting funds sit there unused. And then we are kindly asking for a $50,000 advance to our department so we can start this project with some of those Blue Ribbon Committee funds that were already granted and approved and in contract. And again, this match is to ensure project continuity. There's some overhead fringe costs that aren't included in the grant, and that 1.9 million dollars, that could be pretty significant. There might be some unforeseen internal costs, like some additional labor or staff time that we need to dedicate to get these tasks completed, or additional contractor costs. We have to do extra monitoring at any point to evaluate project success, monitoring, lab analysis, some of that's included in the Blue Ribbon Committee grants, but those costs change all the time. This would also include if we have another fire, if we need to do some emergency sampling, some of those costs could be included in there because that will contribute to stormwater. Also, we want to make sure that we have the ability to apply for future grants, particularly if we're looking for some implementation funds that are built off of some of the planning that is going to be produced from this project. And we want to make sure we're complying with any mandates or state orders and permit requirements that pop up. Over a five-year period, we can expect to see two or three of those orders. And so some of these match funds will help us be able to meet those to make sure we stay in compliance. And then additional coordinating costs. So the Clean Water Program, it's a collaborative, again, between City of Lakeport, City of Clear Lake, and Lake County and the Watershed Protection District. And it takes a lot to keep that program going. We want to make sure that all of our partners are taking care of if there's anything that we need to do together to maintain this program. Last thing, if anybody is interested in anything we've talked about today, you want to participate directly. We do have a Clean Water Program this Thursday at 2:00 PM. It's via Zoom, so anybody could log in. And if you want to attend and you don't have Zoom, you can contact us at Water Resources, and we can arrange participation in person. And I'm really grateful that we're able to have these programs and talk about these fun things like stormwater. And thank you, our rep supervisor, Crandall, participates, as well as Supervisor Spatia is the alternate on this program, and then Supervisor Crandall is our representative on the Blue Ribbon Committee. So thank you. Thank you. That was a lot. I'll take any questions now and can help facilitate a discussion for this item.
Vice Chair Scott.
I don't have any questions that I definitely support this project. I know some of the phone calls I receive are from the Sota Bay area where we do have stormwater catches, but we're not cleaning those out. So they're not doing their job as catching all the rubbish and stuff that will ultimately end up in our, our lake. So I support this, and I think we need to be moving forward and helping Water Resources do their job.
Supervisor Spatia.
Thank you for the presentation. I know that this has been something we've been talking about in the Clean Water Program for quite a while, to getting this concept moving forward and how to get the funding to be able to really do this. And so I'm very interested in pushing this forward. Glad that the Blue Ribbon Committee is joining forces with the Clean Water Act to be able to move this forward as well. But I'm very interested in the financial portion of it and hearing from admin office as far as where does that fit into the cannabis taxes and other general funds that are being utilized? That's something of interest that I'd like to hear before giving the final approval. Real quick, you said $50,000 upfront. Does that mean that there's $450,000 left for the entirety of the match? Or is that in addition to the 500? Just kind of wanted to check in.
We were thinking it was going to be part of the 500,000. It's just to start, jumpstart the project so we can start purchasing things that we need right away. So it would be, you are correct that the 450,000 would be left. So technically, for the first year, if we're asking for 100,000 each year, this first fiscal year, it'd be 50,000 would be advanced to us, and the other 50,000, we would just spend like normal. We've done, we've had a one cannabis tax with you guys before program, and we would, we would operate the same way.
So it's like the 22, 23 year would start a little early. We just front 50, and then another 50 comes in once the actual fiscal year starts.
Or it could start during July 1st. It can start during the fiscal year, beginning of fiscal year. That's when we're assuming, that's when we're planning our contract will be done with the state, the Natural Resource Agency for that first chunk of 706,000. And so we would spend down that 50,000 advance first, and then any we spend over that 50,000 advance, we would, we would apply for the reimbursement internally like normal with the internal cannabis grants like that. That's right, Stephen? Okay, Stephen's not in yet.
Stephen, I want to unmute. Thank you.
I thought you could hear my head rattle. So about the finances, there are some one-time funds within the regular general fund that we could throw towards this. But yes, the idea was this is a great program that can be funded through cannabis. Even with the 50% reduction, because we have allocated a lot of our cannabis funds, a lot of it hasn't been spent. So what that brings us down to is I'm looking, the reason why I'm looking off to my right is I'm actually looking at my Form 5 for the upcoming 22, 23 budget for cannabis. And we're looking at, even if we receive 50% of what we normally do, so between 3 and 4,000, through 3 and 4,000, 3 and 4 million, we should have about 2 million set aside for cannabis policy items, and this would fall into that category. It would only be 100,000 in 22, 23, and then 100,000 the year after, in the year after. So it's really only 100,000 hit on that 2 million. I think this is a great project that can be used, utilized from the cannabis funds.
Thank you, Stephen. Are there any other questions? So we'll open it up to the public in case there's anyone from the public online that would like to make a comment on this. I'm not seeing anyone. So I will close public comments and bring it back to the board. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, just one follow-up question. Angela, when we had it up there, obviously our partners with ourselves, the county, but also the City of Lakeport and the City of Clear Lake are going to be beneficiaries. Was there any conversation about asking those folks to chip, you know, to, to put some funds into the, to the program?
That's a great question, Supervisor Simon. And when we proposed this project to Blue Ribbon Committee, part of their, not their grant requirements, but they encourage collaboration, support. So we proposed this project from the Clean Water Program angle because we do already have that built-in collaborative effort and contribution. There's been other projects that we have done with the Clean Water Program. So there's been some TMDL, or we have a state requirement to reduce sediment phosphorus. We had to do some, some trainings, and those were all done with collaboration and contribution from both cities. So it's kind of project by project. So if we do a project within this, this overall grant project, we'll bring it to the Clean Water Program, see how much it costs, how much we have grant funds, and then we kind of all look at it and then contribute a little bit or see where we can contribute. It's really project by project because the size of Lakeport, the size of Clear Lake, some projects are better done by the area. If it's something on the land, some projects are better done by the population. So we have these factors that we account for some of those differences, and so it's easier to do it project by project than it is overall. But the idea of the Blue Ribbon Committee funds was that it was going towards collaborative projects, so they could be used for anything by these, these entities. But if you guys have some requirements for the 500,000 match for that, again, that's for the county. That was for us to make sure that we could complete our side of these projects. So the Blue Ribbon Committee funds would really be used to do anything for the Clean Water Program, but the 500,000 match would be to make sure that we have the staff, the county side, to complete these tasks that need to be done. The county, as you know, owns or has more land. We manage more land. We are in charge of way more land and stormwater infrastructure than either of the cities. So it's going to cost a lot more for us to make sure that we're able to carry out these tasks. I hope that answered your question. And then Stephen, yeah, you want to add? That'd be great.
Well, I don't want to butt into the board. Does, do any board members have a question first?
Go ahead, Stephen. I asked my questions. Go ahead, if you have an answer.
Well, I don't have an answer that's for Angela, but I did have a question actually for Angela where the 500,000 makes the whole project happen, period. But would it be under 500,000 depending on if we have projects in Lakeport and Clear Lake? So it, our match technically would be about 490, let's say, instead, and you can possibly use that for something else within, to expand the project past the 1.9? Because I wasn't sure, you were saying it's by project. Is it by project within this overall grant? Or is this grant? Go ahead.
Yes. Usually when we do the contributions from the cities and the counties, it's by project because we'll get a proposal and estimate from a contractor to do a certain project, and then we figure out how much that costs, and then we figure out what factor that we want to split that cost with, whether it's area-based or population-based. Or sometimes we do a combination of those, both of those things, and then we do a split that way. Usually the cost comes down to, Lakeport and City of Clear Lake is very, very small compared to county because we have so much space, population, and area. But that is the way that we, we split up those before. So if I think I'm understanding your question correctly, correctly, that there would be less needed of that 500,000 if there's more contribution from the two cities, and that's why we're doing it year by year, and it would be by project by project. So, and also, the amount that's allocated for each task completion in the Blue Ribbon Committee proposal, you know, what if those numbers are, get outdated by the time we get to that year where that project's done, and we need a little bit more to complete that project? Then that's where those extra funds would help to support so we can actually complete that aspect. There's a lot of projects, many projects, big projects, within each task that'll need to be done within this grant. I hope that answered your question.
That's what I figured, and I, I just wanted to explain it a little better. That was my understanding as well.
Okay.
All right. I want to make sure, I know when we do projects and we say we have partners, you know, obviously the county is going to have the heavy lifting. There's no doubt about that. But, you know, as always, you know, having skin in the game obviously brings more people to table, allows more projects. So it seems like at this point, we're going to be fitting the whole bill and then moving those projects across. So anyway, I just, I wanted to bring it up during our conversations here, you know, that we'll be fitting the whole bill at this point.
Any other questions? And I, did I close public input already? Because I seen someone raise their hand online. I don't know.
I was wondering where Betsy was. This is her thing.
Betsy, I, go ahead and unmute and...
Thank you for the reprieve, Mr. Chair. Of course, this is Betsy Khan. I've been involved in the stormwater program for over 15 years. I want to laud Angela for her just amazing work to coordinate all these, all these very complicated tasks. I just wanted to say that in, under the terms of the conditions from the state water quality order, the cities have separate responsibilities for their own compliance. So in addition to coordination with the Watershed Protection District for the overall performance of the, of the water quality order, they have their own fiscal obligations and their own performance to, to contribute. So don't, don't think that they're not doing their job. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I just want to make a point. I wasn't saying that they weren't doing their job when we're talking about 500,000 dollars from the cannabis funds. My question directly was, you know, if, if the cities were approached with having any funds coming into this program. So that was my question. I wasn't saying no one was doing their job, but as said, everybody has their requirements. We all need to go into this together. So I'm clearly not against doing the program, but I think the question needs to be asked because if we were to partner with the cities, most likely, they would be asking where our, where our contributions would be if it was coming from the other end. So I just, I just want to make sure we have the conversation and I put it out there.
With that, I'll definitely this time close public input. And I think from here, it says, "Presentation and discussion. Consideration of direction to staff as needed."
I'm good with what was offered with the $50,000 upfront and the rest in the 22, 23 to 27, 28 fiscal years. This is a needed program. So if you guys are ready, I'll move to...
Stephen.
Stephen had a, go ahead, Stephen.
I just wanted to, you didn't, Supervisor Spatia didn't make it specific to cannabis. If you don't mind, do you mind leaving it open for either general fund or cannabis as the funder, just in case, whatever, however that year looks like? So it's not tied down who, which pot is coming from?
Well, I, I think that I'm fine with moving forward with the 50 grand, but I think as we move forward and have the bigger conversation about our budget, I think it's going to be important to know where that sits and where that money's going to come from. So I don't know if we need to approve the 500,000 today and say 50,000, and then approve the other with the budget. I'm not quite certain what is required to be able to move forward from the Water Resources perspective. But I think that overall, seeing the big picture of the budget and where this fits in and what funds are going to be utilized to fulfill the needs of this project is going to be an important conversation during the budget time.
I think they need to promise that we will provide the match.
Yeah, and, and that makes sense to me. So I don't see an actual motion that needs to be made, but there's funding. So I'm going to say I approve of the request to allocate 500,000 of internal matching funds over a period of six years with a upfront $50,000 right now and the remaining of the 500,000 between 22, 23 and 27... and the remaining of the 500,000 between 2223 and 2728 for the stormwater project fund. I hope that's appropriately stated.
And that's in the form of a motion?
That is in a form of a motion, yes.
I second it.
So I have a motion to end a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you so much to the board, we really appreciate it. And we will have an update on this program coming up on the 25th of March. So you guys will get a more in-depth detail of what we do with the stormwater program and the clean water program. So look forward to that. And thank you so much again.
Did you say March?
Really appreciate it.
May or March?
Uh, May, sorry. Pregnant brain, sorry, thank you.
It's all right.